So you'll see that we are doing some social distancing and following the requirements that are posted on all the official websites that say what to do. Some of our city managers are also monitoring this meeting, watching this meeting, but in another room in the same location. So I'll start by saying that we acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqusasne. Like a motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Towndale and Councillor Grant, all in favor? Carried. Any disclosure of interest?
I think we're all pretty interested.
We're all pretty interested. Thank you, Councillor Abell. We'll need a motion to go into committee of the whole. Councillor Gardner and Councillor McDonald, all in favor? Carried. Presentations and reports. So this meeting is really to have administration catch us up on all of the work that they've been doing for the weekend and for much of today. And then we're going to have some discussion amongst ourselves around communications and how we want to move forward as a council. So I will start by throwing it over to our CAO, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item on our agenda that's been revised is we've put a bylaw on to appoint Geoff Weaver as our alternate to our emergency management coordinator, Mr. Nutley. So I think, given the situation that we're in, as we look forward in the next couple of weeks, depending on what's going on, I think we want to make sure that we have proper business continuity in our operations. So I'm looking for council's approval this evening to appoint Mr. Weaver as the alternate EMC.
Councillor Gardner? Want to move that? Seconded by, Councillor Grant. Any discussion? Councillor McIntosh?
Just what terms of reference do they have with this? Are they working with Dr. Paul on this closely with him?
Madam CEO.
In closing up places?
Right. So what it can do when I get to the update, I can give you an update on that. When we look at specifically the role for the emergency management coordinator and the alternate, Mr. Weaver in his previous experience has also had experience in that area. So it's a natural fit for us to appoint him at this point in time. But then with respect to what that committee is and what that role is, I can provide council with that update on the following item.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Update. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna provide, I'm gonna just kind of go through and provide a series of things that have occurred in the city. As council is aware, based on communication, we had closed our, some of our facilities over the weekend. In addition to that, today, we have closed, as of the end of day today, we have closed Richelieu daycare, following guidance from the province to start to close daycare facilities. We are also in the process of closing public access to our municipal offices. So that will occur end of day today. We are still going to have some city resources in our buildings able to respond to telephone inquiries, emails, and try and meet some service requirements, although we're going to start to scale that back a little bit. Part of this planning is part of our business continuity planning from a perspective of following the direction that we heard from the Prime Minister early this afternoon. He is really calling out to Canadians, encouraging people to stay home, to self-isolate, to social distance themselves for a period of time in an effort to try and slow down the spread of the coronavirus, in an effort to try and mitigate the demands that's going to put on our health network and our hospitals. So in doing so, we are going to try and, our managers are going to work with their departments to figure out what that business continuity plan looks like in their areas. We do have many employees that can work remotely and have the technology to do so. So we'll be taking advantage of that. And then we'll also be trying to just, I think, mitigate how many employees we need to have in our bigger areas. As far as services that are going to continue, we're going to continue with, we're going to continue with social services will be available for emergency types of responses. We're also going to be working with social services in the days ahead. We might, I think we're going to be trying to set up a call-in number for individuals in the community that might be somewhat shut in or not have access to, you know, whether there's items that they need or if there's certain support that they require. I think we're going to set up social services to be able to be the party that's going to respond to those needs. And so we will start to be putting out information on that in the days ahead. Cornwall Transit is going to continue to run, but visibly there's going to be precautions taken with Cornwall Transit to block off roads immediately behind the transit drivers. We might have some passengers that might enter buses from the rear of the bus. And we might have some seats blocked off on buses to encourage proper social distancing. Part of our communication to the community is going to try to encourage, if it's not essential that you need to get on the bus, if it's non-essential travel, then let's try to respect what we're trying to do to mitigate exposure in the community and the public and via our transit service. Our first responders are going to be one of our biggest priorities as well. So we want to make sure through business continuity that we are supporting our, our departments are supporting first responders, the Glen Storton Lodge, and public transit and social services. So at the Glen Storton Lodge, mitigation efforts have taken place. There are heavy restrictions restricting people from access to that facility. Older people are the most vulnerable in this situation in the case of an outbreak. And that is, I think, consistent with direction from the Ministry of Long-Term Care, as well as the hospital, I think, is following similar protocols. So you're not able to visit, as far as I'm aware, there's restrictions on being able to visit people that are either in hospitals or long-term care facilities. We're going to be, I think we're going to have to ramp up communication in the city as well. We're going to look at, certainly it's very easy to put communication on our website, but I will be working with our public information coordinator. I think we also might want to approach radio sources with respect to maybe we can find a set time every day where the city will have set times for communication, so that if people want to listen, we can share that information with the public, as well as continue to have information on our website. What else? Kind of going through a whole bunch of stuff here. Internally, we have initiated our EOC, our Emergency Operation Command, approach with senior managers to, actually ended up meeting today. I had one meeting planned, but we had two meetings that we ended up doing, meeting again this afternoon. We are going to have regular meetings. Our meetings starting tomorrow will be done via conference call, again, to try to support that social distancing from each other. I also don't want to bring in primary and secondary contacts from departments. I don't want to put pressure on them to be in close proximity. So we will be doing that daily. We'll be trying to take a pulse of what the needs are within our community and how we're able to respond. The city is also, in addition to the mayor's office, the city is also engaged with the Eastern Ontario Health Unit. I think we want to make sure that we're available to provide some backup support and assistance where necessary. I know that the Health Unit is looking at locations currently to set up an assessment center. I would like, in kind of scaling back some of our services, I would also like to have resources available, depending on what requirements they might have, to get some of those facilities set up. If there's something the city can do, then we want to assist with that. I think that's quite a bit. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So we'll start with Councillor McIntosh and then Councillor Gardner.
When it comes to council meetings, have we given thought to doing away with delegations?
Well, we've talked about whether we're even going to be postponing the next meeting. We're not sure about that one. But yeah, we talked about how we would continue to meet. So, Madam CEO.
So through you, Madam Mayor, I think that looking at a council meeting that's scheduled a week from today, and also looking at the demand on city departments and resources, also the world is changing hourly. It would be my recommendation that council consider postponing the Monday, the meeting for next Monday. I know that we have also had inquiries about how can we conduct meetings potentially remotely or maybe not bringing all of council in the same room. I would like some time to look into that and work with the clerk on that. And I think that depending on what occurs in the days and weeks ahead, I think when it comes to our agendas, to your point with respect to delegations, I think that we need to focus on critical business items, you know, whether we need to have certain contracts awarded, bylaws, but kind of stick to core business and maybe move a little bit away from some of the items that we typically bring to council for communication.
A couple other things. Can we cancel all committee meetings? Committee meetings are out?
Yes, so through you, Madam Mayor, thank you for helping me with that one as well to counsel. I think that we should cancel all committee meetings, with the exception, there is a PAC meeting this evening following this one. So I think that council could proceed with that. We have also, we are also going to be cancelling all of our public engagement sessions that are planned in the next few weeks, because it would make absolutely no sense for us to be trying to bring people together for that. And much of this information is going to be on a weekly basis to determine, we're going to assess as the weeks go on, you know, what the, what the length of time will be for that.
Couple more things. I know it's early in this game and financial impact, any thought given to what kind of financial impact we're going to have on our budget?
So through you, Madam Mayor, I think it is too early to ascertain the financial impact. I have directed all departments to try and monitor and keep track of that. So we're going to keep track of those expenses. We certainly have the technology and the wherewithal and the know-how to do that. And I think that we should, because I would anticipate there may be an opportunity down the road. There are certain things that the province will cover currently, but if there's additional opportunity for some of that recovery, we want to make sure that we're prepared. With respect to scaling back our services, I'm not sure that we're going to have an impact of a lot of excess costs. What we are going to do is I think we want to alleviate stress on revenue items. So for example, we're shutting down childcare facility. The city does not want to be trying to recover any fees for services that we're not able to provide, our facilities are closing. We are, we're going to be kind of, I think, pulling back on that. There might be times where transit might allow people to get on the bus and, you know, potentially a fare might not be collected. So I think we're going to use good judgment with that and...
Yeah. And it's pretty early for a prognosis on this.
Very early.
We're really, when you said things change, I guess so. Donald Trump confessed that he, the United States is really in trouble today.
Yeah.
Finally. Anyway, thanks for the...
And everything that we're doing now is to stay ahead.
Yeah.
To stay ahead of that.
As Wayne Gretzky says, you go where the puck is, not where it was.
Yeah. All right. I have Councillor Gardner and then Councillor Grant.
First question I have is, we talked, you talked about the public information. Is it going to go out there in both official languages? Because that's, that's a needed thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely. Our public information coordinator is going to put everything out in French and English.
Thank you. And as far as, would we be looking at layoff, laying off any, any employees of ours?
Madam CEO.
So through you, Madam Mayor, some of our part-time employees will be laid off, depending on areas of service. I do believe that there's also mechanisms set up that people can claim EI immediately. Our full-time employees will not be affected.
So they wouldn't, the money coming from the feds, billions of dollars they talked about today, would, they couldn't, we couldn't recuperate that from people that we lay off, for people that we lay off?
So through you, Madam Mayor, not that I'm aware of. So these are decisions that we're making today. If we need to go back and revisit any of them at a future date, we certainly will.
And my last question is more of a, I'd like to get Dr. Paul's... Right now, our, the province is looking at reducing Eastern, Health Units from 35 to 10. And given the seriousness of what's going on now, I think I'd like to see Dr. Paul revisit that and give us his comments at some point in time about what he thinks should be done here. Because if you look at what's going on now and you drop to 10 health units in Ontario, it could be a major, major problem in terms of getting information out and all even at that. So I think somehow I'd like someone, either you, Madam Maureen, or Madam Mayor, to get hold of Dr. Paul and ask him what his thoughts are on that.
So Dr. Paul has been very good about staying in contact with both myself and the CAO and the city in general. He does want to come back to speak to council at some point today because it's such a rapidly evolving file. He said, you know, it might be better for him to come at a later time, depending on what, what things, what things transpire. But he's certainly willing to come and speak to council at any time, and we can certainly speak to him at that point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Grant and then Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, what Mac was talking about as far as future meetings, I would support the fact that the CAO and the mayor get together and you decide what the, if it's, there's an issue that needs to be addressed. And other than that, we, whether we have to pass a motion tonight to say the future meetings will be dependent upon the decision reached from the mayor and the CAO. If it requires, I mean, because there is a bylaw that talks about our monthly meeting.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know if, I guess we'd have to have a, I almost said notice the motion on this, because we're going to get into this.
Yes, exactly. Madam CEO, do you want to address that?
So I think, and I'm going to look to the clerk to help me as well. I think tonight we'd like to see a motion to counsel the meeting, like postpone the meeting for, I'm not going to say cancel, but we're just going to postpone that, that meeting to a future date. I, I don't think we need to, at this point in time, I don't necessarily think we need to postpone the next two meetings unless council would like to give the public notice of doing that. What I would also like to do, and I've been talking to the mayor, you know, if there's a need to have more frequently meeting, more frequent meetings, but we might try and see if we find a mechanism for council to approve doing it electronically. I think we want time to work through that and what that process would be like. But it could be that we, down the road, maybe as a result, maybe we have more frequent electronic type of meetings where people phone in. We're going to deal with business matters that are kind of critical at that stage. So I would like, again, maybe just a little bit of time to take that offline and do some research and try and find the right solution, working with the mayor and council. And we can also email some information to try and get some feedback.
Okay, thank you. The, the next item is, I sent an email questioning basically where council fits into this, this issue. And the reason I did that is that people were coming asking me questions and I didn't have any answers. And then there's a public notice go out and I don't know anything about it. This impacts, as Councillor McIntosh was saying, this impacts our budget. Where do we fit in on that? Because we decide budgetary items and, so we're a board of directors for corporations. So where does that border, directors fit into this process? I'm not questioning the decisions. I think they were the correct decisions. It's where we fit in as a council and how we communicate on a day-to-day basis with people on the street.
Yeah. So your question is completely appropriate, and it's why we're having a council meeting now. So when we were making those decisions at noon on Friday after meeting with the medical officer of health, you know, it's not so nimble, eh? This is a large group to get together. So we said, okay, we'll make the decision to react on Friday, but we'll call a special council meeting so that we can have exactly this conversation as to how to proceed. Exactly this conversation. How do we get information to you? What kinds of decisions require us as a council to make together, right? So this is where, you know, I've been talking to the CAO about this, and we're trying to figure things out and get information in terms of how to proceed. I want to make sure that you have information every day. So we're even talking about whether we should have a daily briefing or a call-in with council every day. At the same time, every day, four o'clock, we would be available, CAO would be available to answer your questions. And so that you can, you're a part of the discussion every day. So that's something that we discussed with the CAO. But, you know, this meeting is really about getting your feedback on this as well.
Well, that's a good point, Madam Mayor, because today, I listened to a program this morning. I very seldom watch TV, but I've been watching more TV than I ever have to keep up to date with what's going on.
Yes.
There was a program this morning, they talked about there's going to be a bomb in the United States with this, not a real physical bomb, but a bomb with this, with this issue. And they're really concerned about the future of the United States with this issue, where it goes. And when I listened to our Prime Minister today talk about, we're not going to have any issues with the border, I said to see, are they up to date with what's happening in the United States? Because I think, and I'd be prepared to put a motion forward to say, we should encourage the federal government to, to close the borders, because we're right next door. And they're coming across without any kind of restriction right now. And that puts our, our community at risk. And I think we should be encouraging them to say, no, you've got to do your screening the same way we are at the airports. So that's, that's the kind of thing that, the input that we would have on a daily basis, talking about the current issues with this, this virus. So I don't know if that motion would be in order, but I think we should be sending something to the, to the federal government, encouraging to them to, to close the border for, for American travel. So I'll put that motion forward if it's in order and if I can get a second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam CEO, go ahead. Go ahead.
Perhaps if I can just speak, so part of having an opportunity to do a call sort of towards the end of the day would give me an opportunity to update council on the activities within the municipality and the city. It actually would be much more efficient for me than trying to put together a long-winded email, depending on, depending on what's going on, because the day, even today, changed significantly from this morning to this afternoon. To your comment about the borders, my only comment in response to that is that there is a significant amount of commerce that moves across our borders between trucking and transportation and industry. And so I think that if, if you want to make that motion, that's okay. But perhaps we can try and find a way to get some better information for council so that we understand what those impacts would be.
And I'd like to add...
I think it's more the, excuse me, more the pedestrian, not the commercial.
I'd like to add that I've been in touch with Grand Chief Abram Benedict as well from Aqusasne, and particularly in light of the Prime Minister's comments or announcements today around the border, just to see how his community is feeling. So I, I hesitate to want our council to move forward with a motion like that, Councillor Grant, just because I'd like to make sure that we're not passing any motions that are sending any messages to our neighbors in Aqusasne who deal with very complex jurisdictions. So I'm sure the motion's in order, but I'm just putting that out there for you to consider.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about our community.
Yes, I know.
And, you know, that's, that's my first priority.
Of course it is.
So that's, if we want to, I can wait, and I don't know how we can forward this, do this if we're not meeting on Monday, next Monday, when we're going to do this, because I figure one week may be too late.
Can we, can we make motions electronically? How does that work?
No.
I don't think we can, right? We have a, we have a bylaw in place that disallows that. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Either way, just went through this.
Yeah. So to do that, we'd have to, what, suspend the rules? Yes.
I think, I think what we'd want to do to facilitate something like that, I think we, I think we want to go back, get some information for council. We'll have to bring it back. Rather than, rather than commit to exactly what that process would be tonight, because council has already passed a direction not to participate electronically, not, not ever anticipating that this situation would come forward, right? So I'm sure that if we came up with a practical solution, I'm sure that council would fully endorse and support it. I think I would just like us to be able to, you know, position that properly for council.
So going back to your point, you'd like some time to think about that and get some more information?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, since somebody's seconded it, maybe we'll just put it on hold for now.
Okay.
I can...
You're okay with that, Councillor Grant?
Yep.
Okay. I have Councillor McDonald and then Councillor Towndale on the speaking list. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. Well, I've been watching a lot of TV too. And I listened to the response to what the Prime Minister said about the border with the states. And every time Christopher Fearland referenced it, she said, hourly, like they're evaluating this thing hourly.
Yes.
And then the Premier of BC publicly asked people from Washington State not to come to BC. And the take was that probably within hours, it'll be a firmer, don't come here. But in the meantime, anybody who does come, even if they're just coming to shop at Walmart, they have to sign a paper saying they've been advised they're going to do a 14-day incubation, isolation period, and that's a pretty expensive hotel room. So basically, I don't think we're going to get stampedes of tourists coming here. And we don't want to interfere with the other kind of traffic that we need to come here, you know, medical supplies and all this kind of stuff. Besides, I sort of cringe at that because two things I heard on TV today really just made me. One was like the mayor of Montreal had kind of an implicit criticism of the federal government's response. And I'm thinking, this is too early days for anybody to take on the feds. Like, we have to have, I think, a united voice. And taking a shot at anybody higher up on the ladder just destabilizes everybody's confidence. So I think anything that sounds like it's a criticism of either the Ontario government or the federal government should just be swallowed. Anyway, that's, that's what I think. And speaking of communication, then I'm really glad to hear that we are hammering out a communication policy. I've really appreciated hearing the, the communication about transit today. It's so good to know that that service is still there for people, because I'm kind of worried about the people who, I mean, obviously we all have to engage in some sort of social distancing, but we have a whole lot of people, families, who are home with their kids, who didn't expect to be, and who might have trouble, you know, finding babysitters and even juggling the time, because even though everybody's saying you don't need sick notes to stay home from work, there are people who are going to be pressured to work, people whose work status doesn't even qualify them for EI, for example. So there's all kinds of pressure out there. So I'm really happy to hear you say that even though offices are going to be closed, I hope there's a wide-open welcome on every damn locked door saying, you know, just call this number, we're here for you. Because people, I think, can be stressed to the point of frustration if they just haven't got that extra 10 bucks or whatever and know there's no way of getting it, even though, like ministers on TV are saying, we're going to be helping people with financial difficulties. I'm talking about people who are in financial difficulties before this virus hit and who probably have, are experiencing less resources than they had now. So I would hope that every door that is manned by the city has the same message on it, so that it doesn't come across to the public as a locked door. There's nothing more frustrating if you're in difficulty and the damn door is locked. So lock the door by all means, but make it real easy for somebody to get the number, and not just the number. And not just the number, like this is a small detail, but I was at housing today and it's not a criticism of them. I already spoke to them about it, but it says, call our number. What's the damn extension? Because I know I've called that number often. And the only reason I'm not frustrated is I know the extension. But I don't think Joe and Josephine Public necessarily know it. So, let's make it super easy for anybody who comes to a door that's locked, that they can whip out their cellphone if they have one. And let's not count on them running home and, and emailing the address that's there. Let's make it real easy for them to stand right there and have somebody say hello, you know, and say the office or whatever, and can I help you? So, I hope that even though we're not going to be doing, um, person-to-person exchanges with the public, I hope we'll have a whole bank of telephones serviced so that people who call those magic numbers can get a human being. It's going to be so important. Because with social distancing, you get social isolation. And with financial difficulties, you get terrible frustration. So, let's make sure that doesn't happen. And, um, something else I'd like to suggest is that if we're going to have a daily briefing, it would be so wonderful if Dr. Paul would be part of that daily briefing, two minutes out of his time. Because I've been watching all these TV, you know, shows as you have, like at CBC and TV all the time. And then I flip to the states and it's just appalling. But, um, the fact is that, uh, the greatest credibility, I believe, comes from those shows where you see the message being delivered by the medical officer of health with the politician standing behind them in support. And not necessarily saying anything beyond repeating what the medical officer of health has said. Because this is not a political crisis, this is a medical crisis. So, we look to our medical officers of health for guidance. And naturally, that's what the politicians do too, you know? They say, according to the best information we're getting. And then they say, of course, that can change in an hour, and we know that. But, um, it's really important to have the, the officers of health being the ultimate, uh, sources. And, um, I think maybe, yeah, I guess that might be it. But except both these locked doors, are we going to have, I hope, there be a, a universal common sign on all the doors? It's kind of short notice to whip something up, but I got a feeling, Emma, I don't, there she is. I'm sure she could put together something, because I think you did the thing on transit. Or somebody did. And I tell you, it had just a good feel to it, you know? There are ways of delivering bad news that don't make people go away mad. And I think that's why we hired Emma, so. Whatever messages on the doors would be really good if it were, uh, penned by her. I think that's, uh, I think that's all.
So, there's a couple of points. I think your comments about social services, I'm going to turn to the CIO to see if she wants any, to add anything to the comments about locked doors and social services. And then I'd like to address your comment about Dr. Paul and daily briefings.
Okay, well, about the locked doors, and if I could just say this, like I know at housing and at social services, there is that sort of waiting room. And I believe that a person can get that far and sit down and recoup or whatever without ever seeing another human being. And I think that's good, because if somebody takes the bus and goes up to nineteen sixteen Pitt Street and finds the door locked, there isn't a bench outside, but there is inside. And, and there's absolutely no possibility of contaminating anybody who works there, because there's a glass partition and there's a locked door. And like, and a person can access a bathroom without ever encountering a human being who works there. So, I guess I'm curious to know at what point the door will be locked. Will it be the exterior door? Or, you know, if you want to wait half an hour for the next bus, if you can sit there in the office and wait, or that sort of thing.
Right.
So.
So, I'll turn to Madam CIO, and then she'll direct questions where they should go to.
Sure, through you, Madam Mayor. I think the intention is for most of our city buildings that are right here in the city core will likely have signs on the door, but the doors, like the doors will be locked to not allow access within our buildings. Uh, with respect to, uh, facility that's a little bit more on the outskirts of the city, if we're talking about Carmel area Housing Corporation, I think that, uh, the administrator of social services will, uh, take those comments back. Will determine if there should be a rest area per your comments. Um, again, what we're trying to do is mitigate number of people in buildings, mitigate the staff that, that are there. So, although we might have staff on a rotational type of cycle. Because the, the reality is, depending on how the pandemic spreads, or if we do have a pandemic, we're going to have a couple of things going on. So, initially, we're going to have employees away because of travel that are now going to also have to be, uh, self, um, isolated for fourteen days. And so, through that time period, we also could have a situation where, i- in addition to normal health reasons why people might be sick or off, now we're going to have people that might be exposed to the virus. And we might, I think, worst-case scenario, we could be looking at up to thirty percent of our workforce in some areas, right? So, I think initially, uh, we can look at some of those solutions. We can look at maybe having some of that space accessible. But I would anticipate that as we work through this, uh, process over the next several days, I think people and communication of people will become, uh, critical. And people will become more aware that more of these offices and areas are going to become restrictive. So, I think that, to your point, maybe in the short term, we should allow access. But I think we're also going to get to a point where we might have to be prepared to, to not provide access depending. But I think we're going to use good judgment through that process, so.
And the weather's getting warmer.
Yes. A bench is probably something that we can take a look at sooner than later.
Does the manager of social services want to add anything?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I, I will take your considerations under advisement. It's very difficult to, um, isolate people from coming up into the elevators, which our staff will be using. So, I just want to be cognizant of that small space and having a multitude of people coming in and out of the building. But I can take a look at if there's something I can do in the lobby, uh, until people can catch the next bus or et cetera. So, I'll, I'll consider that.
Yeah, and maybe I can talk to you after.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. And, uh, in terms of Dr. Paul attending a daily briefing, I'm sure he would. Um, depending on his schedule, I'm sure he would jump in on a meeting of some sort with council. He has expressed today to me that he would like to speak to council, uh, regularly. So, we can find some way to facilitate that for sure. Um, just to your comment about, um, the medical officer of health and the politician. In a way, our community went through that a little earlier than most communities, right? Because we went through the quarantine process, um, weeks before this was an issue for most communities. So, we are familiar with the process of listening to our medical officer of health. Dr. Paul has been on the ground, uh, for, uh, a longer time than most.
Just to add to that, Madam Mayor, if I can.
I have another person speaking, so I'll come back to you after.
That's good.
Yeah, I'll come back to you after. Councilor Towndale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, I was going to speak on the issue of, uh, electronic meetings. And I understand there definitely needs to be some time to take that away. But just from a more, uh, procedural point of view, because we did discuss this last October, and at the time, we decided against it. However, you know, if we're going to move ahead with this, we still have to approve it, even though we don't know what it looks like yet. And my concern with that is, we'd have to come back here and vote on it. And I think in order to save time, it might be a good idea to give, like, to vote in favor of the idea. I know it's, without it in front of us, it looks kind of like a, a blank slate, and that can be concerning. However, I think these are exceptional circumstances. And I think it would better prepare us going forward so that we can continue, because government has to continue during this time. So, I mean, I realize that the CIO and clerk need time to come up with what that could look like, and there are other items too. In terms of resources, I have the former report in front of me here. But if it makes sense, I'd like to put forward a motion to reconsider that, just so that we can, we're ready to go when the time comes. As opposed to us having to come back here physically to vote on allowing electronic meetings at a later time.
Okay. Madam CIO, do you have a comment?
Uh, so, Madam Mayor, I think that's a very good idea. I would, uh, suggest if council would like to proceed that way tonight, let's proceed first with a motion to reconsider. That motion would require a two-thirds majority. Um, and then, following that, then we would have a motion, again, from the counselor to, I think, give direction to administration to determine the appropriate mechanism to have electronic meetings. So, I think that would be, I think that would be in order this evening, given the circumstances we're in.
Thank you. Councilor Towndale.
So, I'd like to make that motion reconsider.
That point of order.
Councilor Grant, go ahead.
The, uh, usually, uh, you have to put a notice of motion first before you get a reconsideration motion, that's, uh-
Can I put forward a motion to suspend the rules?
Madam CIO?
I'll second it. I would say that we can have a motion to suspend the rules. And that would, again, need a two-thirds majority to do that.
Councilor Grant? So, Councilor Towndale, you're making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yeah, to suspend the rules, please.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, just the-
Councilor Grant?
Just what the motion says.
Yes. Madam Clerk?
I would, I would only support that if it's on, for emergency issues only, not to have it normal.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, the clerk can probably provide better wording than I can on that.
So, you're, you're making that motion and you're agreeing to including an emergency component?
Yeah.
Councilor Bennett?
Yep.
Madam Clerk?
So, the first motion is to suspend the rules?
I think the first motion-
So, we'll start with that, and then the next-
The first motion should be to suspend the rules to allow a notice, a notice of motion or a reconsideration based on, you know, the, uh, current, uh, emergent situation that's occurring in our community as, in relation to the coronavirus or COVID-19. So, I think that's the first motion. We will tie wording to that motion that's specific to the situation today.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
And so that was moved by Councilor Towndale and Councilor Bennett.
Seconded by Councilor Bennett. All in favor? Against? Carried.
Can you just, may I ask a question? Now that, now that it's been moved, I suppose it may be a little late. I know we added emergency to the wording. I'm thinking of things like tenders that need to proceed. Would that be considered emergency? Regular city business that might not be emergency, but urgent?
Right. Madam CIO can address that.
Sure, I think, I think the intent, again, the intent of the motion is to suspend the rules. Because of the situation that we're in today with respect to the coronavirus, we want to look at business continuity. So, if you want, we could not necessarily focus just on emergency. We can talk about proper business continuity for the municipality, recognizing that we need to look at alternatives to having everybody greet, uh, group within a, a room for a meeting.
Of course. Right, no, no presentations on upcoming festivals, of course. But, uh, the business of the corporation needs to continue, whether that's urgent or emergency. I think that could be at, at your discretion, of course.
So, I think what we need to do initially is we need to, uh, look at the motion to suspend the rules.
Right, right.
Then we'll look at the motion, like, I think, do this in-
Oh, I thought we had already voted on both.
No.
Did we not vote twice already?
So, we just suspended the rules.
Okay, I thought we voted twice, sorry.
Okay. So, now? Councilor Towndale?
Uh, motion to reconsider, um, electronic participation by coun- members of council.
During-
And are you adding any?
During emergen- well, yeah, the same wording, during this current situation, uh, as a result of, uh, COVID-19.
Okay. What about Councilor Abau's point?
To ensure smooth operation of city business continuity.
Sure, I don't think it needs it.
Yeah, I don't think it meets it, because we're not, like, what we'll do is we will be, we will be determining as administrators what needs to go on the agenda. So, I think we just need to, uh, uh, allow the motion to reconsider because of the current situation with the COVID-19.
So, Councilor Towndale moved that. Is there a seconder? Councilor Bennett, once again. Any discussion concerning the wording? Councilor Mackenzie?
What form does this take when you say electronically? Is this Skype, or is it call-in, or email?
Through you, Madam Mayor. In a relatively short period of time, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do it via Skype. Uh, it might be via call-in. And then I think, um, uh, with respect to, uh, closed matters, I'm not sure how we would deal with that. So, I think what we would look for, if council's going to reconsider this process, then what we would do is we are going to, we're going to come back to council with, with a recommendation or with an agendas as to what we can do.
You just raised a good point, closed meetings.
Right.
Right.
You, I don't think you can do it electronically.
No, no. No, but we have to deal with transparency even for the public meetings. How is that going to look like, right?
Good point.
So.
It's virgin territory.
E- exactly, and this is why the, the, the CIO has been saying she needs some time to work this through. But the, the fact of putting a motion on, uh, the books is a good thing.
Good call.
Are we going to vote on this electronically?
Not yet. So, do we, how, are we comfortable with the wording of the motion? Do we need it reread?
It's good.
Madam Clerk, do you want to reread it?
Uh, the motion is to reconsider the matter of electronic participation by council members at council meetings um, due to the current situation of COVID-19 emergency.
Okay, all in favor? Against? Carried.
Okay, and what, you, you wanted one more, Madam?
Madam CIO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would appreciate one more, uh, uh, motion from council if they would agree. I think we need to postpone, uh, the meeting that is scheduled for a week from this evening, given the events that we're going to be dealing with over the next several days. And we'll figure out electronically how we're going to proceed in the future.
Councilor Gardner wants to make that motion? Councilor Abau wants a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Any other items? Discussion? Council, Councilor Gardner.
Dealing with Dr. Paul, you, you said it right, but today on CJOH TV, that, almost that full hour was Dr. Paul out of our office answering questions from people from all over Eastern Ontario. We are also working on, if it's approved by the province, the Eastern Ontario Health Unit will take all of the information that's needed, that needs to go out, instead of going to the province and going to consultants. And it's all going to be done here in Cornwall. So, all the information that we're going to need for anything will come right out of our office here. And it'll save the province millions of dollars.
Councilor Bennett?
Just a quick question. I've, I've noticed, uh, the last couple of days and today, including Ottawa and Toronto, um, closing, uh, retail operations, restaurants, except for takeouts. And basically, if it's not essential, so pharmacies, grocery, um, takeout food for people that need it. Um, is that something we've talked about yet, or too early?
Through you, Madam-
We've talked about everything.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot.
Go ahead, Madam CIO.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Maybe if I could, I would also maybe just like to, uh, provide some initial comments as well with respect to, uh, food outlets and retail. Um, we did have some staff that reached out to multiple, uh, major outlets, including, uh, Walmart-
Walmart, Farm Boy, Loblaw's.
Farm Boy, Loblaw's, and No Frills. All of the CEOs of these organizations are backing up the, um, the ability to be able to continue to meet the demand and delivery of product in their stores. Uh, we're trying to, uh, encourage people not to panic, but to certainly, you know, uh, obtain, uh, food requirements that you might need to, to self-isolate for a period of time. But, uh, so I wanted to kind of get it with that messaging as well, because all of that messaging coming through to us is consistent, uh, with what we're hearing, uh, province-wide. Uh, with respect to, um, uh, closing of restaurants and those types of things, I think I would, uh, suggest that the municipalities not have decision-making authority or jurisdiction over that. Uh, it might come from another authority. It might come via the, uh, Ministry of Health or the province. So, I know that, uh, both, um, uh, the mayor and I have had preliminary discussions on that. But we don't have, unfortunately, don't have an answer for you today. But we might, but we're mindful of that and we're, we're listening carefully. We are noticing as well, uh, what is naturally happening through the communication and the media and the news. There are many areas that are scaling back from any type of cash type of exchange. More and more moving to, uh, like a, a credit card or a, or an app to pay. And then we've also noticed more and more in the, I think in the areas where of, uh, coffee, coffee shops, there are scaling back with respect to, uh, access to their facilities or trying to, trying to promote that so- with respect to access to their facilities, or trying to, trying to promote that social distancing. So that is the type of communicate, that's the type of stuff. We're seeing that in the media as well. We haven't been contacted directly by, by any, any retailers that I'm aware of. So I think that, again, we're gonna, we're gonna see more in that. I think we saw first at the end of last week, major social events, conventions, big areas that attract people, those things are trying to shut down very quickly. I think what we're seeing is just a migration, moving from that now through to other, other aspects, so.
Just, you know, I saw, when I saw that, just maybe realized that not everybody seems to have the common sense to self-isolate. So I've met two couples today at the store that just got back from Florida, running around doing some errands and, and not read. You know, so, I mean, it's, it's bad enough that these people would go to stores for stuff that they need emergency supplies for, but they go into all these other stores that they don't really need to go to, you know. So that's where I was going with it originally, is for the people that seem to think they're better than everything else.
And I think that we want to, I think we want to continue to work closely with the health unit, understanding they're going to be extremely busy. If there are things that we can be doing in the days and weeks ahead to continue to, like, to promote that type of communication, that people that are returning from travel abroad, there's things like that that we can be helping with communication. We're talking about videos as well. Videos seem to be a very useful tool right now. Those are all the things that I think that we want to try and make sure that we stay on top of. And if we have a role that we can play to assist, then I think we want to try and, and do that.
So on the issue of closures, to your point, Counselor Bennett, it is a rapidly evolving file. So we are going to, we are waiting to hear from Dr. Paul on that. You know that every province is dealing with things differently, because every province has their jurisdiction over health matters. So we're waiting. But we wouldn't be surprised if there was an announcement made tomorrow around some of that stuff. Part of why we would like to set up a daily briefing with council as well, towards the end of the day, maybe every day, to try and keep everybody up to speed and keep council in the loop, so that you're, part of the process. I need you to be part of the process. I don't want to be the only one carrying this. I need all of you decision-makers along, along with me. Counselor McDonald?
So, Madam Mayor, when you talked about a public, the radio possibility of a session, I assumed you meant for the general public. But you mean just for council?
No, no. Daily briefings are to keep council in the loop, okay? The radio. So I was going to be speaking to that in terms of a communication plan. We understand that social media is not for everyone. Not everybody is on those media. So we have to make sure that our communication plan from a city perspective encompasses traditional media. So Ms. Meldrum is already looking at what we could do in terms of putting out information using radio, using traditional media. So expanding, not just relying on our website and social media. Okay? Counselor McIntosh?
I certainly wouldn't want to rely on the Wild West.
No.
AKA, social media.
Right.
Dr. Paul, with these updates, we get the number of people in quarantine in the city at this time. I mean, there's all kinds of rumors going around about, you know, this person's in quarantine. I know one person who is. And I think we've had one case that's been announced.
We have one confirmed case, yes.
But the positive cases, we could just get an update on that periodically from the...
Yep. Madam CEO?
So through you, Madam Mayor, I believe that confirmed positive cases will be, will be pushed out publicly, very much so. That is accessible information. I am, we will also make sure that we keep council in the loop on that with respect to number of people that are self-quarantining or self-isolation. I think that many people that are returning from travel are going to be encouraged to do that. I don't know if there's a way to try and anticipate what that number potentially could be. I can put forward that question to the health unit. I know that people are directed to call their local health unit upon return of a trip if they're not sure what they should do, or whether or not they should self-isolate for a period of time. So the, the health unit likely will be getting calls on that. I can, you know, potentially see what that volume of calls would be, because that might indicate.
Yeah, I, somebody told me yesterday, in fact, it was my wife on Facebook last night, somebody suggested there are two nurses or two employees at a pharmacy who are quarantined. You know, you don't know whether that's true or not, because it's on Facebook. So I'm hearing it from the, what we call the horse's mouth, is, you know, as you said, the medical people are the ones that we want to listen to, not social media.
Dr. Paul does want to stay on top of all those rumors, and he does put out the confirmed cases on the Eastern Ontario Health Unit website right away. So that, he keeps track of that.
We could link into that.
You can.
Be helpful.
You should. Yep. Counselor Gardner?
It is true. There was one young lady who worked at Walmart who is a college student.
That's the confirmed case.
Yeah, that's confirmed. Apparently, another news media suggested there were three, which is false news. And I'll leave it at that. But I'm getting daily updates, not if anybody wants to call me. I don't mind letting you know.
They're on the website as well. I think Dr. Paul is keeping that updated, so you should all have access to the Eastern Ontario Health Unit.
Just like to make another comment, Madam.
Yeah, go ahead.
I met with Kelly Bergeron, two managers of the Gappy, this morning at nine o'clock. And they're going to need some volunteer help. They've already started to only allow 10-person people in at a time. And as they're leaving, they're giving them boxes of food to hold them over for the week. So they're starting to adjust. But one of the things that was brought forward, that they would need volunteers to help out, food is being left out outside the door also for specific people. So when they call in, they give their name, and the boxes are left outside.
So community agencies are also doing their planning, and they're putting lots of things in place. And we're going to stay in touch with all of those agencies to figure out, you know, if there's anything that they need. But yes, Kelly Bergeron has started a, and she's actually had so much interest that she has a ton of volunteers that want to help. So the community really does want to step in. Centre 105 with the church, they're also putting a plan in place to have food handed out instead of having people sit and consume it. So every agency is doing their proper planning. At some point, we might want to link all those resources up so that people have access in one spot to all of the, the different things that all of the agencies are doing. Counselor Grant?
Is, have we found any impact on our Meals on Wheels? You know, because it's almost all seniors that are delivering that. And I don't know if there's been any, any problems in that area.
Any impact? Madam CEO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, not that I'm aware. We have ordered, I think we have more people that request meals. On Meals on Wheels, they have a choice of a warm meal or a frozen. Sometimes they want frozen meals. So I, we have, I think, had additional frozen meals delivered. We have stored them outside of the restaurant lodge in a, in a facility down at the Civic Complex. So we're trying to make sure that we have those items in place. So I think that for Meals on Wheels right now, I think we're okay. I'm not, I have not heard anything on the volunteer side, if there's any concerns with volunteers. But we're anticipating that that is an area that might, might increase a little bit in demand and need, and we're preparing for it.
Yes, to get the volunteers to deliver, because they're mostly all seniors that do it. So they're the vulnerable group.
They're, they're high risk, yep. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you. Do we have a link to the Eastern Ontario Health Unit from our city website? And we do? Good, thanks.
We do. I, I look back, Ms. Meldrum is linking all of those things together.
Thank you.
I think she's linking also with the provincial website and the federal government website as well.
She's doing it before you think of it.
Yeah.
She reads all our minds.
That's why she's got that job.
Any other comments? Questions? A couple of things I'd like to add. Social Services is going to be setting up a phone line as well. So I think that's very important for people who are more vulnerable and will need to speak to a person. You know, people are worried about seniors, how they're going to be doing. So social worker, Social Services is working on setting something up in the next few days. So I think that's a very good point, and I look forward to seeing that up and running. The other thing Dr. Paul said today is that local assessment centers are going to be set up in our five counties. So he is currently working on that. And we would expect to have a local assessment center here in Cornwall at some point in the coming days as well. Assessment, testing, and then assessment. All of this will be dependent upon whether we have a surge on our hospital. So he's getting ready to go with that. I just want to let people know that we were doing yet another meeting today. We had a lot of meetings today. But we watched the Prime Minister issue his statements this afternoon. And there are very clear messages there. So for those who are away, come home. And for those who are here, try and stay home. And also, buy only what you need. Important to hear those messages and to repeat those messages. That's why it's important to talk about what the grocery stores are doing, how they're feeling about supply. If they're telling us that they're not worried about supply, then we shouldn't be worried about supply, right? So there will be more messaging coming out from grocery stores in the next few days as well. Try to stay home, try to buy only what you need, and also check in on your neighbors. So if any of you are like me, we have elderly neighbors, we have people that live alone, we have all kinds of people in our neighborhoods that we know, that we see. We should give them a call, see how they're doing. So as Counselor McDonald said, social isolation doesn't mean, social distancing doesn't mean social isolation. It means, it means the opposite. We have to flatten the curve. This is, and you know, when people say, oh, I don't want the city to overreact, well, I certainly don't want us to be accused of not acting in time either. So this is a bit of a balancing act, and we're trying to meet regularly, stay in touch with all of our medical officers of health, all of our traditional trusted sources of information, so that we're making decisions hour on the hour based on proper valid information. So your management team with the City of Cornwall are behaving like rock stars. Saw them in action on the weekend and today, and I have full confidence in them. I also have confidence in this community. People are coming forward to help, they care. We love each other here in this community, so I have confidence in us too. So we're going to stay calm, and things are going to be okay. But we may have to take actions in the next few days that are going to be difficult, but we're going to help each other to manage. Okay? Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn, and then we will get back in touch with you in terms of how we're going to keep in touch with you. I don't know if the daily briefing is going to work. We're going to, we'll let you know what method is going to, you know, follow the rules in terms of transparency, and then make sure to have you updated daily. Okay? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Grant, Counselor Towndale, all in favor? Carried. Merci.